Morning and welcome to the Tuesday, November 7th County Commission Meeting. If you'd stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome again. I'd like to remind people to silence their cellphones if they have one with. Meeting documents are next to Commissioner Bender and if you need a listening device, Craig or Carol would be able to help you with that. We'll start with item one, which is routine business and consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the commission minutes from October 31st.
Approve the minutes? Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any changes, corrections? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item three, bills to be paid of $1,067,047 and 47 cents.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second to pay the bills. Mr. Litz, do you have any comments?
Good morning, folks. I thought I'd go over a couple of the higher amounts on our bills today. We have Armor Management that handles the med, part of our jail, and the detox. And if you add up all the total that we are going to pay Armor Management for this cycle, it comes at $273,401.38. CBM, who does the jail food and meals there, if you add up all the items that they have, it's $46,534.13 this cycle. A big item that was paid this year to prom, it's for a highway bridge, a bridge out of highways budget, was $108,471.20. Human Services Hospitals, this time was $11,702.84. We also had an item in there for $47,901. That was a JDC boiler replacement. Another big ticket item was the jail expansion project. We paid the architect $263,383.66. We also spent on two of the ambulance services. They're quarterly, come to $25,000 for Garretson and Humboldt. Couple of other notable items here. Courts interpreters this cycle was $1,532.92. Our year-to-date total on court interpreters is $92,354.12. On the court psychic evaluations this month, or this cycle, bill cycle, we spent $3,500 and our year-to-date is $93,096.75. Another notable item in the bills today, we had for human services, welfare rent, $15,888.28 for a year-end cumulative total so far of over a half a million dollars we've paid for welfare rents. So those are some of the highlights. I just think that it behooves the public for us to talk a little bit about these bills that we pay every month. They see the aggregate number, but this hopefully offers up something in the way of explanation of where the money's going.
Does anyone have any questions for Bob? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Bob, if you'd just stay for a second and maybe inform the audience and obviously the people in attendance about the good news you had that you passed along to us yesterday.
I'd be glad to, Commissioner Bender. Yesterday, we had our ratings call with Moody's Rating Service. And every time we do anything with bonds, if we sell bonds, we get a rating and we pay for it. And I think this is going to be about $8,000 that'll come out of the bond proceeds. The good news is, is in spite of the fact that we are going to have a cumulative debt of about $67 million, we got the highest bond rating that we could possibly get from Minnehaha County. We have the large A, small a1, which is double A1. And considering the circumstances of government finance, that's about as good as it gets. And actually, it's better than the city's rating right now, I believe. There are two things. The credit strength that they gave us was a strong local economy, sizable tax base bolstered by low unemployment, ongoing development of positive demographic trends. Our growth is good. The other part that was noticed was balanced financial operations with ample revenue-raising flexibility. Two of the credit challenges that we had, of course, we already know about, one of them we could do some, I'm not sure we can do either, much about either one. But the first, the big one was financial reserves are slightly lower than similarly rated local governments. So if we could dig up another $10 million cash at our low point, well, that'd put us over the top on that. The other part would be resident income levels are lower than similarly rated governments. So if Jeff can get out and unionize everybody and get that working man's level up there, well, that would help us as well. But there is no outlook on a debt rating like this here. So when I got here, we had just changed the negative and that's had a positive outlook right now. So all in all, it was a great phone call. They asked some questions ahead of time and we scrambled to answer them and we obviously did it satisfactorily. And so the outcome is good for the taxpayers of South Dakota. Type of rating like this, when we go to the bond sale, saves tens of thousands of dollars every year in interest costs for the bonds that we're going to sell.
Well, on behalf of the commission, we want to thank all of the staff and specifically the directors for maintaining a balanced budget, for one thing, and producing a positive cash flow. It does make a huge difference to us over the next 30 years or more with having that kind of rating potential, if you will. And that is the best we've ever had, I think, as long as I've been around. But anyway, the commission really appreciates everybody's involvement in that. It takes a village to make that happen and we appreciate the people involved in doing that, so. And to Commissioner Bender, I'm sorry about, you know, being recognized. That's an insult for you, that's for sure. But thank you to everybody who made that work because it's awesome that we'll be able to do that, especially now when we're coming up with a bond issue with the jail. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Item four is Minnehaha County Highway Construction Project Report for November 2017. That is a report and the Minnehaha County Ambulance Oversight Report for April through June. Item five are personnel actions. First item is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve routine personnel actions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item B is to recognize the significant employee anniversaries for November 2017. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. We have the following significant employee anniversaries for November. We have John Shields and Facilities celebrating five years of service. Samantha Kastner, Sam Hemingway, and Nathan Kruger, all COs in the jails celebrating 10 years of service. We have Trish Oltoff from IT celebrating 20 years of service and Steve Williams from the Highway celebrating 35 years. And I believe our only attendee today is Trish, so our gratitude goes to all of them. Trish, do you have a few words?
Sure you don't want to talk? Please.
I'm going to get going.
You for years of service, Trish, and thank you to everyone else and their anniversary and their support. It's awesome. And I'll give you a couple more minutes to think about. No? Okay. Item C is to record the volunteers in the county department for October.
I'm thinking this might be the most we've ever had. I know we've come close to 300 before, but we have 297 volunteers in five departments. So we're definitely getting up there.
We're very fortunate to have that many people help us with so many programs to help us maintain cost, if you will. So that's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. There's no applications for abatement, no notices and requests, no planning and zoning notices, or petitions for compromise. Now is an opportunity for public comment, for anybody that would like to make a comment about something that is not on the agenda, if it's anything they'd like to speak about, we'd be able to hear that now. No one's moving, so we'll go to item 10, which is a public hearing to consider the 2018 liquor license renewal application for Chasers Food and Spirits due to applicant having a liquor license compliance check violation in the current licensing year. Olivia?
Yes, so as you read, Chasers Food and Spirits did have a liquor license compliance violation check in July of 2017. They did knowingly serve to somebody underage at that time. They have paid their $1,000 fine to the South Dakota Department of Revenue, as well as their $1,500 renewal and $60 advertising fee to Minnehaha County. The Planning Department has no issues as far as land uses and I do believe that we have representatives here from the Sheriff's Office and then, of course, legal to speak if they so choose on this. And then the applicant might be in the audience. Yep, in the back.
Any questions first for Olivia? Anyone have any questions for the state's attorney or for the Sheriff's Department before we start? This is a public hearing. If the representation from Chasers would like to make any comments, we'd be happy to hear those now. Otherwise, there may be questions for you at some point. And you do need to identify yourself, please.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Judy Swerengen. My husband, Mick Swerengen, and we're the proprietors at MJC Holdings, doing business as Chasers Food and Spirits. We've been out there about 14 years. We did sell it for a short term of time, about seven, eight months, and they were not successful with running the business. But you'll see with our tenure, we normally don't fail these compliance checks, so we feel real bad about it. We hope it never happens again. Can never say never, but we do our best and we're very diligent about trying to make sure that doesn't happen. So if you have any questions for us, please ask.
Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Karski?
Yeah, thank you, Judy, for being here today.
Welcome.
When we do the compliance checks, our Sheriff's Department, I should say, and they send out a 19 or 20-year-old and they go to grab a six-pack of beer or whatever it is they get and they go to the counter and if they're asked to see their ID, I mean, they're not trying to be surreptitious about the buying of the alcohol, but yet in the county, we have about one in every seven businesses failing the compliance checks. It's $1,000 out of your profit, which I'm sure, it's not a check that's pleasant to write when you know, yeah. It's a serious issue in our county and in our city, but just what, you mentioned you don't want it to happen again. What specifically, what type of training? Is there any sort of programs or incentives or disincentives for people if they pass or fail a compliance check?
Well, in our case...
Judy, you're going to have to come a little closer to the mic.
Oh, I apologize. Everything's pretty quiet in here. Even the microphones up here don't carry back there that much, so I apologize. And of course, I'm not used to being at these type of situations, so. But with that said, I guess in our case, we only have a staff of two that are, well, actually, only one that's full-time. And we've shown her over and over again how to use checked IDs and so on. We are a restaurant and lounge, so for us, we're not a convenience store where we have that little machine where you can just check them. You gotta, you'd have to bring everybody up there. And we consider it, though. So don't say, I will never say never on that either. We do consider it. We do keep a clock up that tells you what birthdate and coming forward type thing. This was a goof on the bartender's behalf. He feels real bad about it. He's a college student that has always kept himself really clean when it comes to not having any marks against him because he wants to do well when he graduates from college. And it was a situation, she came in, she sat down. I myself thought she looked older than 30, so, but he looked at her ID and then he came back to her. I couldn't hear the conversation. He says, he said to her, "Is that a five or a six?" Or "Is that a five?" And she says, "Yes," or something like that. Like I said, I couldn't hear the conversation. It was a Minnesota license and they have a variegated background color. So that's what made us consider maybe getting a machine eventually to check those kind of things because it shouldn't have gone by him. Does that answer your question or is I getting just too worried?
It does, and I don't know how Minnesota licenses are. You know, in South Dakota, if you're of age, it's this way.
I know.
In Minnesota, it's that way. I guess I'm not too sure what Minnesota licenses...
Right. Way up in the corner, left-hand corner, they do have it in red lettering, we found, that it does say "under 21."
Okay.
And she was within, like, 30 days of her birthday to be 21.
Okay.
It's just one of those things that the timing was awful and he pled guilty to go back to school and we paid the fine and moved on and we feel awful about it. We don't like that blemish against us because we've been doing such a great job of keeping the business running clean that I don't know what to tell you. If you can ask me more questions, I'll answer any questions you have.
Appreciate you being here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I think Jeff, did you had one first?
Well, I, I'll let Cindy go. I'm going to make some more commentary.
Commissioner.
Thank you for coming. Absolutely. Just curiosity, do you know how much those machines cost? I mean, is it something? I have no idea, so I mean...
We're not sure yet either. We're talking to a few people that have convenience stores that use them to see which brand is the best one to utilize and then check into it that way. I'm kind of a real shopper when it comes to that. Like you said, writing that $1,000 check hurt a lot.
Yeah.
Because I'm a bargain shopper, so I'm going to find the best service and then pay accordingly.
I know I was in a bar in a airport, but it was a restaurant bar and we actually, everyone at the table had to go up to the bar and slide our card, which seemed crazy because we were in a restaurant bar. We all had to go up to and slide our card in order to get our drinks. But thank you for coming and I'm sorry it happened. Obviously, we don't want to see it happen. It's a bad deal and we don't want to see anybody hurt because of it, so.
Commissioner?
Thank you for being here. And I tell you, one of the problems is that we've had such a huge escalation in this issue this year. I don't remember another year where we've had more than three at a time and this year we've had 15 so far. Now, you guys are in the county. Some of the other violators were, you know, in the communities of, say, Dell Rapids or Hartford, which the county polices them, but we don't do their licensure, if you know what I mean. The city councils there do. The city of Sioux Falls does their own. But we went from, say, three to 15 this year. We had eight fail one time and seven another. And it seems like there is an escalating problem. And I say this often, I drink plenty and I prefer to drink at a bar, but I try to get a ride home. I do get a ride home. The fact is, though, that it seems like things are getting worse in our community. And, you know, just in today's paper, there's a number of alcohol-related issues with, you know, fatalities in one occurrence, actually in two occurrences, and a person severely beaten in another. And it just seems like, and there were underage people involved in the beating one, and I know that it's estimated that 20 to 25% of all liquor is consumed by underage people. Meanwhile, at least from the point of view of the county, we don't get any revenue from the sale of alcohol. We get, now we do get a little bit. We get $600,000 through excise tax shared with the state. But it's certainly not covering the costs that we have as we incarcerate, prosecute, defend people who have violated laws under the influence of booze. And so I'm chewing you out a little bit here, but it's my job and I expect that you guys will do a great job going forward. But, you know, there's, you know, there's the tax issue, there's also the drapshaw protections that we provide in the state. You know, in another state, in most other states, if someone is over-served and leaves the place and kills someone, the bar is liable. In this state, you're exempted from that problem. If a doctor in this state takes off the wrong leg during surgery, he can be sued. But if someone takes off from your bar and kills someone a block away, there's no liability for you. And again, I'm just chewing you out here. But these are issues that I think are unaddressed in our state and we, as a community, need to do a better job than we are doing.
And if I may address that, I can assure you that, I can assure you 100%, but we have such a good clientele and they come there to eat. And if they do plan on having more than two cocktails or drinks or whatever you want to refer to them as, they have a designated driver or they have their 16, 17-year-old child come at 9:30, 10 o'clock to pick them up, or their 18-year-old come pick them up, and then they leave again. So they've been very diligent about making sure that they have a ride to go home and we feel very good about that.
Thank you.
And good taxi services now, so.
Any other questions for the petitioner? This is a public hearing, so if anyone else would like to make any comments, either for or against the liquor license renewal, we'd be happy to hear that. Any comments from the Sheriff's Department, by chance?
If you have questions, go ahead.
Thank you. If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to approve the renewal application for Chasers. Any other conversation? Commissioner Bender?
I haven't, kind of not chimed in here, but, you know, part of it is that you've got, you've had a pretty clean record, you know, but obviously, you know, there might be some grace provided here, you know, another violation would be taken very seriously. So I know you know that.
We do. Thank you.
I will just make the same comment as, one violation is one too many. We all know that. But unfortunately, as Jeff pointed out, we've seen a rise and I know the Sheriff's Department is really concerned about the whole county's issues and we need to set some criteria and concerns about that rise. And Sheriff's taking this on as a priority and we need to do the same thing. So I think the next time around would not be very pleasant and very expensive. So we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Item 11 is to consider a motion to approve the 2018 Minnehaha Liquor and Wine License Renewal Applications. Olivia?
Yes, this is the annual renewal process for these establishments. It's the 2018 Liquor and Wine Renewals and none of these locations have received any violations, so that's good. Just to briefly go through, we have the Alibi, Badlands Motor Speedway, Baltic Corner, Blue Haven Barn, Bottoms Up, Crooks Conservation Club, Monarch Lounge, Great Life, Red Rock Bar and Casino, River Ridge Golf Club, The Riviera, Safari Bar, Sioux Empire Fair, and Wild Water West.
Thank you, Olivia. Anybody have any questions, Commissioner Barth?
Olivia, is there a different rate for renewing a liquor license compared to a beer and wine license?
There is. The liquor license, it depends on how close you are to the municipality. So for example, a location that is closer to Sioux Falls is going to pay a higher amount than, say, Hartford.
Right.
Areas like that. So for liquor, it's 1,500, the closer you are to Sioux Falls. It's 1,200 or 500 for smaller. For malt beverage, I'd have to look in my notes, but it is a different amount and it's, I don't believe it's over 1,000. But I can pull it up here and look.
Commissioner Barth, you have a question?
It seems to me that it's 50 bucks in the city to get a beer license. I'm not sure, but...
I don't remember. Give her a second to look.
Yeah.
While she's looking, are there any other questions that you may have? Any concerns?
Mr. Chairman, you know, I wonder if they're not actually selling any product, if they shouldn't, you know, give back their license. I look at Badlands Motor Speedway, they've had one event there this calendar year, so they're clearly not on a regular basis selling anything there, but...
Olivia?
I can, I think I may have an answer for you on that. I think the reason they're keeping it and choosing to renew it is because when the time comes to sell the property, they'll want to transfer the license...
Sure.
...as opposed to not have it. And then I did find the renewal fees for malt beverage, which comes up in the spring. So for retail on-off sale, it'd be 300. For package off-sale, it's 200. For packaged malt beverage and South Dakota wine, it's 225. And for on-and-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota wine, it's 325. So for malt beverage, it's significantly cheaper than liquor.
I see.
Any other questions? Commissioner Karski?
Commissioner Barth's comment about, you know, if a license sits inactive or unused for a period of time, I know the liquor industry in South Dakota has a pretty strong lobby at the state level legislatively, but, you know, that's an interesting question. I don't know if our legal counsel has any insight into, you know, does it have to be used or what?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I was just checking through Title 35, Chapter 2, because I think there, as I was reviewing all of this over the last few weeks, as the State's Attorney's Office reviewed these licenses and considered the applicants, it seemed to me, Commissioner, that I came across something on inactivity, but I'm not coming up with it here in Chapter 2, but I can follow up to see...
If you would, that would be interesting.
Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chairman, you know, I think we had something recently where there was a property, formerly a club, that had become a church and they had lost their liquor license, the Moose Club, had lost their liquor license in the city because of not using it and the city took it back. And then they went out of, disbanded and sold the property to the pastor of a church that had been meeting there. But the point being that there was a liquor license that apparently dissipated, evaporated, and they're quite expensive within the city. I think they're a couple hundred thousand dollars. And there is a shortage of them. I believe we have a couple in our inventory that we could sell to people if they were to open a full steakhouse, bar, restaurant-type joint somewhere. We have a couple licenses we could...
Yep, we do have a couple and the city's license is based on the population census and they are very valuable and an asset of the organization, for sure. Any other comments? With that, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the list of liquor and wine license renewal applications. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 12 is to authorize the chair to sign a county jail per diem contract with the counties of Aurora, Brookings, Duel, Gregory, Hanson, Hutchinson, Hyde, Kingsbury, Lake, Lincoln, McCook, Moody, Sanborn, and Turner. Warden Gromer?
Good morning. Jeff Gromer, I'm the warden at the jail. This is just the yearly daily bed rate contract renewal. The price increase this year is about 3% over last year's price. The new daily bed rate's $96.45 a day. I think, as most of you are well aware, the jail doesn't have a whole lot of extra beds to rent. We do rent a few here and there to Lincoln County, a few to the marshal's service. Other than that, it's pretty sporadic with our availability to rent beds. But this is the new rate that'll be charged for them.
Any questions for the warden? Commissioner Karski?
And I don't know if I've asked this before, but is there a science behind determining that rate or can you explain it if there is one? How do we come up with it?
Kim can probably explain it way better than I can. We work on it together. We use, it's basically a formula established by the federal government that they provide us for figuring the rate for the marshals' prisoners to house them. And it takes into account all of our costs, including debt service and the salaries for administration. I mean, portion of the sheriff's salaries figured in there, the chief deputy's salaries, any debt service we have on the building. It's a fairly labor-intensive process to come up with that number, but it's, that's the formula and the process we use to figure it out.
Is there, is it set by any federal or limited by anything? I mean, it's not. Okay, so it's our number that we use through that process.
We use, based on that process and that formula. We'll actually be negotiating a new contract with the federal government here in 2018 and we'll use that same process, that same...
Will they pay the same rate?
...calculate it. There's always a negotiation with the... ...calculate it. There's just always a negotiation with the federal government and the Marshal Service as to what rate will actually be used. My goal is for everyone to pay the same rate. We figure the costs, costs are the costs. It doesn't change a whole lot, depending on what agency we're renting beds to. But the Marshal Service becomes a slightly different discussion when you're negotiating a rate with them.
Well, and I've heard, and, you know, my understanding is that a lot of times, the federal prisoners probably are a little bit more labor-intensive than our local. I don't know if that's true or not.
It, it really varies on the inmate. Obviously, an inmate with higher medical needs becomes more labor-intensive, and inmate with some mental health needs becomes more labor-intensive. The Marshals' prisoners tend to be longer-term custodial prisoners. They've been in custody longer, or typically more experienced inmates, and that has advantages and disadvantages with both. Some of them become far more high maintenance. Some of them are less. And, so it really varies from one inmate to the next.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to authorize you to sign this contract, and I'm just very glad that this is not us putting people in their jails.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Jeff. Authorize the chair to sign an amendment to the contract between Mini-Haha County and CBM Managed Services to adjust the cost of kosher meals. Jeff, and Jeff, would you do me a favor and raise the mic? I'm getting a signal or something.
This is a very minor contract adjustment with our CBM food service agreement. It simply adjusts the price of the kosher meals that we provide as a special diet for inmates that qualify for that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Motion to approve the contract for kosher meals. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the contract for kosher meals. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item fourteen is to authorize the chair to sign a 2018 police service agreement between the county and the cities of Baltic, Colton, Crooks, Dell Rapids, Garrettson, Hartford, Humboldt, and Valley Springs. Captain Walsh?
Morning. Mike Walsh, Mayfair County Sheriff's Office. This is the standard contract that we go through every year to provide police services to the eight towns that we currently police. There's no changes in the hours or the terms of the contracts. There is a slight increase in the amount, approximately seventy-seven cents per hour, and that's due to the standard cost of living type things, and insurance, fuel, personnel, staff increases, things like that.
Any questions for the Sheriff's Department? Commissioner?
Captain, how are we getting along with these cities and stuff, the city councils? I know I've heard good reports about you or your deputies going to city council meetings, et cetera.
I think they appreciate when, when we have a presence there, even if it's for five or ten minutes for newer council members to meet them. I get emails weekly from one or two of the, of the cities requesting special patrols, or thank yous, or things like that. And at this point, I, I think I can confidently say our relationship with these towns is really strong.
Any other questions? Excuse me.
One more.
Yes.
Going back to points I was making earlier, a number of our alcohol compliance issues were in those towns that we contract to patrol. Have you had any feedback from those communities as to their licensure situations, or are they happy or unhappy that we have found such an increase in, in problem?
I've, I've had no feedback whatsoever, pro or con against it, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kerski?
Logistically, if we have, say, somebody up in Dell Rapids, and they receive an assistance call from another sheriff's deputy or highway patrol, are they permitted to leave, or how does that work?
They are, sir. We try to restrict it as much as we can, because Dell Rapids, you know, they, they contract for a lot of hours.
Mm-hmm.
But there, there is an understanding that if, if a deputy's in trouble, or a deputy needs backup, until another deputy who might be farther away can get there, we will send them out of Dell's, but we'll send them back just as soon as we can. And you'll see that sometimes in our, in our contract logs, some, some breaks in service for an hour, hour and fifteen minutes, things like that. It, it does happen occasionally.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract between the county and the cities listed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item fifteen is to authorize the chair to sign a food service contract between the county juvenile detention center and CBM Managed Services.
Jamie Grabett, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. This is our yearly contract with our food service management that is part of the school lunch program that we're a part of. This year, we had to complete an RFP. It was quite a, quite a process and a learning process for me. Initially, we had no one submit bids, which was odd, because CBM usually always does. They did not receive the proposal, which, again, was odd. They were mailed out to, were required to mail them out to any contract. There's a list of contractors that the state requires us to send them to, and they were one of them, and it was sent to them. Once I went through the process of discussing with our legal and then the Department of Education, what my process could be, since I received no bids, I contacted CBM, and they were interested. We went through the process of getting a contract to learn that we have to make the RFP, the contract, and so it was, it was kind of a mess, but we got it all accomplished now, and I'm asking that you approve that contract.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions for him?
Make a motion to have you sign that contract, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have any other questions? If not, all those in favor of the contract between juvenile detention and CBMs, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you for the extra work. Item sixteen is to consider a motion to authorize the application for a 2019 contractual grant funding from the South Dakota Weed and Pest Commission.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ralph Hammer, weed supervisor. This is the fiscal year grant for 2019. The Weed and Pest Commission approved three hundred and thirty thousand for this contractual grant, divided evenly amongst the counties. If every county brings in the two people they need, it's five thousand dollars per county.
Thank you. Any questions for Ralph? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the application for a 2019 contractual grant from the state. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item seventeen is to consider a resolution to declare the building affixed to and situated upon 411 North Minnesota Avenue as surplus property to proceed with demolition of the building. You're not Craig. You look like Carol.
Right there.
Right here.
He just got called out of the room.
Oh.
A quick conversation. Apologize for being a little tardy. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Before you today is a request to declare the building affixed to and situated upon 411 North Minnesota Avenue as surplus property. After I run through this explanation, I'd be more than happy to read the declaration, if that would be helpful. On November one, Mini-Haha County purchased the property at 411 North Minnesota Avenue in preparation for the jail expansion. And due to parking being decreased for construction staging and where the jail expansion will ultimately sit, this property at 411 North Minnesota Avenue was purchased to turn into a parking lot. Was known as the key building, or is known as the key building, the tenants have all vacated that building. And so, by approving this request to declare this property as surplus, the county can now, would be able to move forward with demolition of that building. Would be happy to answer any questions or read the declaration, if that'd be helpful.
Thank you, Craig. Questions for Craig about the building or demolition? Commissioner Kerski?
Two things. When would the building be demolished? We have a waiting period or something of a few weeks, don't we, before this becomes effective?
Facilities Director Mark Crins is coordinating that process.
Okay.
And the latest date that I've heard as a tentative date for demolition would be the beginning of December.
Okay. And then, and this just came to me as we're sitting here, and I'm thinking, that's gonna become an employee parking lot, from, I think, our discussions. For employee safety, county employee safety, I think we should approach the city about doing what they have done at other intersections on Minnesota Avenue, and, you know, no turn on red when pedestrians present. I don't know who or what would take to make that happen, or who we approach, but I think that would be a very smart thing for us to do, because this can be a busy intersection. If we're gonna have employees parking over there and crossing that street, I think for safety, it would be a good idea to have that in position, just putting that out there, if anybody wants to talk or think about that.
That would certainly be easy to follow up with the city about that, and we can visit about that more afterwards. As a, a couple of notes, there will be a fence on the parking lot, so traffic will be directed towards the light for crossing, but certainly, an extra safety precaution could be that no turn on red, as you're suggesting, Commissioner.
Any other questions or comments?
Commissioner Kerski is wise.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna go there.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to declare the building affixed to 411 North Minnesota Avenue as surplus property. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item eighteen is liaison reports. Anyone have any liaison reports? Item nineteen is new business. Any new business? Item twenty is old business. Any of, wanna have the old business reports? If not, I'd like to go into executive session for contracts, litigation, and personnel.
So vote.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. I'm gonna need about ten minutes.